Good evening and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Happy New Year, everybody. Present this evening, we have Thomas Chanacki-Clark, Mr. Richard Clark member, David Durgan member. We have our Town Planner, William Scanlon, and myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. First item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, under new business, we have accept resignation of Steve Waitroba and recommend replacement to fill the seat until the annual election, and that's in June?
May.
May, okay. So we do have a letter here from Mr. Waitroba. I'll just read it quickly. Gentlemen, with much regret, I hereby resign from the Dudley Planning Board effective immediately. Due to family and professional obligations, I am currently unable to provide the time and attention to the planning board position, that, excuse me, attention a planning board position requires. My time on the planning board over the last three years has been enjoyable learning experience, and I thank the voters of Dudley for allowing me to serve. Sincerely, Steve Waitroba, Dudley, Mass. So...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to add my thanks to the act that was given by the Selectmen at their meeting on Monday to Mr. Waitroba for the hard work that he's done. I mean, this man has taken the shovel to a lot of things in terms of files in this building. I suspect he come up with some juicy bits of information, to say the least. I would almost move that we refuse to accept his resignation, but I don't know that that can be done.
I think it's as well. Bill, typically, it's, it's, we ask the alternate member if they would like to fill the position?
Yes, that's the usual procedure.
Okay.
Bill, do we have to vote to accept the resignation?
Yeah, I think so.
Vote to accept it?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't think you have a choice, really. No, he's left us none, but we'll move the motion anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept with regret the resignation of Stephen Waitroba from the planning board.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, second, but...
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so we just so happen to have our alternate member present tonight, Mr. Edmiston. Would you be interested in filling the position until the next town meeting, uh, next town election in May?
I'd be honored to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do we just have a vote to...
It's a dual appointment, so I think this board should recommend to the Selectmen, and then they would...
And then they would appoint, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend Mr. Daniel Edmiston to fill the remainder of the planning board position vacated by Mr. Waitroba to be filled by election in May of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Steve. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Does everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes?
No.
Somebody like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Everybody was here. Okay, next item on our agenda, A and R plans. We have none for this evening. Let's just down to topic number four, discussion with the Water and Sewer Commissioners. And I believe they're here.
Okay, because we have a quorum here, and we are posted. We're opening our meeting at seven thirty-five. So, a couple, last week or so, we received plans for the DMA Holdings and the Chase, Chase Mill. We have been working towards having those peer reviewed, because it's important to have them reviewed by engineers so that they know what, what specifically to be looking at on building plans. We approached Mr. Scanlon about the, having them reviewed through the fifty-three B?
Fifty-three G.
Fifty-three G, I keep getting the wrong letter, fifty-three G process. And we were told that that's not possible, and we just wanted to get some clarification as to why.
So the plans that you received, what are they for?
The plans for the, it's the, the ones that are going to go before the public hearing in, on the twenty-fifth.
It's a marijuana establishment?
Yep.
We approve the marijuana use for retail cultivation and processing. They're changing the cultivation component from using existing buildings to a new greenhouse. And the new greenhouse is about fifty-five thousand square feet or so of space, so it's a change to the site plan.
So they're going to build it on, on the ground?
Sort of behind...
The mill.
Behind the mill, where they tore down an older building.
Because this, this site is part of your aquifer protection?
Yeah.
It's in our aquifer protection district, and there is a portion of that which calls for dropping a well, putting in a well for irrigation. Not sure if that's irrigation for landscaping or irrigation for their crop. I'm assuming it's for the crop. There's some concerns with that, but we want to have our engineers take a look at that and, and make sure everything is, is proper before, we want to get it, we wanted to get it done before the public hearing.
Why, why this change? I thought they were going to grow the marijuana inside the, inside the existing building.
That was what they proposed. I'm not sure why they've changed, but...
So that building...
That'll all come up on the twenty-fifth. Our concern here, more than, more than that, is getting...
What, yeah, what are they going to do?
Adding, adding our review to the peer review process, so to speak. Right now, you have, have things peer reviewed by, by your engineering firm, and I believe they came back and said that they don't really look at water sewer issues.
Correct.
And that's understandable that they, you know, they're not going to review something they don't know.
Right. You may recall, we did this once before for the Fish Road Marijuana Establishment. We used the Water Sewer Department's hydrogeologist to review the pumping test information.
Yep.
So...
We can just go back to the same one?
The Water Sewer Commission is not one of the entities that's eligible under the Chapter fifty-three G statute to hire peer review consultants, but the planning board is, so the thought would be that we could be the lead agency in terms of hiring the person.
So we basically have to redo this whole site plan if they're gonna, if they're gonna change it, or is it a modif, is it a modification?
It's a modification of the site plan. They've already got the special permit.
Yeah, but that was on the mill building, right? Now you're saying they're going to build another building?
They, they tore down a building behind some of the buildings on, uh...
I thought the deal with the town was they're going to fix up the building, and then they're going to use that as a grow facility.
Yeah, that's still on the table, as far as I know. They're not tearing down the whole mill.
On your building.
It's a new greenhouse in the back.
So the building that they tore down, that wasn't like historical or anything like that?
Uh, I've asked the Chairman of the Historical Commission, and he didn't have any problems on itself.
That all, that all went through the process in the past.
Yeah, that was the Historical Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to the Chair, so their intent is to change this completely? There'll be no growing of marijuana in the building?
I, I, I don't know anything about any of that. Our concern here tonight simply is just getting, getting the...
Peer review by the right engineer.
Getting the, and, and a perfect example for how, what could happen without having it reviewed is what happened up on Lyons, Lyons Estates with that pipe being run down for the hydrant halfway down the hill that, uh...
Won't get looked at.
Hyd, hyd, hydrologically didn't work, and we ended up having to tell them no after they've been through your, your review. So we need to, we want to, we want to build review of water sewer into the process so that we don't have issues.
It's a legitimate concern, because if they did dig a new well, it's right next to the town's existing pump station.
It's, it's in our, in our aquifer protection district.
New well might affect the town's pumping capacity.
Right, and, and, and that's not even, that's not even permissible unless, unless it's approved by you, correct?
Correct, correct.
And DEP, of course, if it's a new source, they would have a jurisdiction over it as well.
And with the...
So the point of hiring somebody's...
Full letter word that we're dealing with.
...impacts, that new well might have on the town water supply.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's multiple concerns. This was just, kind of the topic was the fifty-three G, and part of that was brought up. There's, when they came to us with their proposed plan, it was increase in their water usage by, I want to say, one hundred and fifty thousand gallons plus a day.
A day?
So it's a significant use, so we also want, you know, part of what we were looking at was it needs to be reviewed by our engineers to determine if our infrastructure can handle the flows, the added fire protection, whether we have the capacity, you know, there's a lot involved in determining that amount of flow.
And if the engineering data comes back and says this isn't possible, then they're, then, then they're not going to be allowed to build this.
Well, it impacts by town water.
Yeah, but if your wells can't handle what they want...
Yeah, they're just saying they're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day.
Yeah, and what do they want to produce over there, though?
And, you know, like even through the summer, where we're in trouble with different things until we get the temporary treatment online, you know, we wouldn't have been able to handle that flow. And it's something that we need to have the engineers evaluate. They have hydraulic models for us and what our capacities are and, you know, what the treatment plan is designed for. In addition to that, when they're looking to put in a well, if they're looking at putting a well where they are, and, you know, we haven't finished some of our study on trying to determine where the PFOS contaminations come from, some of it is potentially from that area. And if they're pulling a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day out of a well, and that source may be beyond them over by the Stevens Mill or something, and they start pulling that towards them by pulling that water through the aquifer, and then it starts pulling down further to us, our levels may go up. It could affect that. And beyond that, if they're putting in a well and then discharging to the sewer system, Webster has a new NPTEs permit, and under their NPTEs permit, they're required to test for the PFOS. And they're not regulated yet, but they're doing the testing to determine levels and where they are. And if they're pulling water out that's not being treated, like we're putting it through a PFOS treatment, so our contribution, our contributions to Webster's wastewater will be on the low end of PFOS levels. But if they're pulling it untreated for PFOS and then discharging to the wastewater, and then their levels are increased in Webster, and they get hit for additional treatment to treat PFOS, part of that expense is going to come to Dudley. So it could have a long-term effect and, and a heavy effect on our budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So, so I guess the bottom line is what do we need to do to get a review of water sewer built into the peer review process?
Would somebody from your, would somebody from your board be coming to the public hearing when they, when we have the...
Yes.
Okay, so as long as somebody from your board...
Our superintendent will be here, and...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you can express all those, all these concerns again at the public hearing, and then, you know, we'll have, we'll have, you know, just cause to ask for this review by a, you know, professional engineer.
In the meantime, do you happen to get a proposal from Northeast for this review?
Well, Northeast was the, they're hydrogeologists, but we would be looking at Ty and Bond who's done our hydraulic modeling and...
And I have spoken with them, and they do this.
And they also be in conjunction with Northeast.
Okay.
As to, because the Northeast is doing the hydro, the, the hydrogeology portion of our wells. So there's multiple people involved and...
So the way we normally do it is we get a cost estimate?
Yeah.
And inform the applicant and request the funds.
Right.
So we need to be sure that they're going to pay for the cost before we go ahead.
Yep.
If you can get us an estimate...
Okay, we can do that.
Whenever you can get to it, it doesn't have to be right away.
Any question?
And I, I guess, and then, so I get, but the, the, the bigger question is how, how can we get this built into the process for the future? A subdivision comes in, some, you keep hearing rumors of subdivision from the courthouse down the hill. You know, when things like that start happening, how can we get that built into, into the process? So we are...
We always send you the plans for any subdivision to your, your department for someone to review. And I mean, if you want someone outside of your department to review it, just let us know, and we can, we can build it into our, our review process.
Okay.
So what happens if the town's on a water ban? Are these guys not allowed to water their plants?
Well, that's, that's, when we, when we implement a water ban, it's typically no non, non-essential outdoor water use.
Yeah.
So if they're going to be indoors, it's...
They're indoors, and it's also, it's also essential at that point, because it's their business. It's different than watering your lawn, or water, you know, for me, water my lawn.
What's your well produce over there on Schofield per gallons per minute? You guys have any idea?
Um...
Is it going to keep up with all our residential?
Well, we, we currently have three more wells over on, what is it, West Main, East Main?
West Main.
West Main, on West Main that are not active yet. We're going through the activation process now, and that'll come in when we tie that with, doing the Water Main project, it'll probably be going over the summer to tie it into the treatment plan. So we'll have the capacity at that point. But yeah, until...
But then you tie in the other mill, that's like two hundred something units in there. You guys have that figured in there, too?
Mm-hmm, yeah, two hundred units will probably be, it'll be a lot less than that. It'll be probably in the thirty-five to forty thousand gallons a day range, so...
Will they be purchasing any town water, or is the...
Well, that's the original way it came.
Yeah.
Was they were looking for town water.
But with the well, if they do get this well...
If, if they were to put the well in for irrigation, they wouldn't be using any town water for the plants.
Right.
They still have to flush toilets. They have employees, they have to have toilets and sinks, and...
Still need fire protection.
They still need fire protection. That all comes off of, off of the municipal waters, water supply. Okay.
They drill their own well, they use their own water, but Town of Dudley still gets charged for sewage. You got, how you guys, you guys going to have water meter in there?
We would have to meter it. Right, so we would have to meter it.
We'd have to meter it, yeah.
Typically, I don't like allowing someone to tie into sewer without tying into water, because that's our method of measuring and, and controlling things. But it's been allowed in the past, we just haven't got to that point to address that issue yet, but...
But seeing it's in our aquifer...
Well, your weed plants are going to be fertilized and everything.
There are, there are many concerns.
Another area of concern is that they're discharged...
Webster's going to say, hey, no, I don't want this crap in our sewer.
Right, so we need to have that determined, if they need to put pre-treatment in to treat their discharge before it goes into the sewer system, so...
Maybe, maybe need to build like a holding tank or something for the discharge?
They typically have a pre-treatment.
A pre-treatment before it goes in the sewer.
Yeah, I mean, I know they have one over in Douglas, they have a, a pre-treatment, and it goes through, it's quite an elaborate system.
Yeah.
They treat it before they discharge.
So the Water and Sewer Commission has independent authority over this project. The planning board has site plan, review authority, and authority to allow tying into their water sewer system.
Yeah. We, I guess the, 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 the hope was that we could put all the reviewed in, into one process and instead of having, you know, layered, have, have a layered approach, because they come to you before they come to us.
Well, this board is the only mechanism to implement those reviews. It has to be through you, so we'll request through you to...
Okay.
To do the...
Now, if they're doing another building, does that give them another address? So they have to redo their paperwork?
No, it's the same address.
Or they adding on to that building?
Same address, but they're changing their use and they're increasing, so they would have to go through the process of...
Go back to the process.
But that, yeah, that process, so I guess we'll hammer out on the twenty-fifth. Okay, I guess that's really, that's really what we had for, for your board tonight.
Okay.
I have a question for you guys. With your PFOS treatment facility, do you guys test the water before it goes into the...
Yes. We test the raw, and...
Those are still PFOS with all the rain?
Oh, yeah.
In the raw, yes, it's, it's still in the, it's elevated, actually.
Above the twenty, or?
Yep.
So they would probably need a PFOS treatment, too, for their well, because if they're going to be putting that stuff in the cannabis.
There, there, like I said, there are many levels of concern that's with that, and that, again, would be one of them.
It's all going to cost money.
Yeah.
And this is money that shouldn't be paid by the ratepayers.
Yeah, definitely don't throw it on taxpayers.
Yeah, that's, that is another concern of mine, that if they're using the water that's contaminated with PFOS and the, the irrigation of their, their marijuana, the, this town, this towns up in Maine and stuff that they ban, you know, you can't, like, you can't eat the deer, you can't, because it absorbs into the plants.
Yeah.
So now if it's absorbing into those plants and people are consuming it, and FDA has different regulations than EPA and DEP, so those may not get triggered through the FDA process, whereas they would with DEP. So they could probably skirt that, and nobody would realize what's going on there, but...
Eventually, it's going to get caught, that, 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 that PFOS train is going to catch everybody at some point.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, it's, it's just going to, it's, it's rolling, it's rolling downhill, so...
In this case, you'd be inhaling the PFOS.
Right, you'd be, you'd be consuming it yourself.
Edible, you've got edibles.
Oh, you'd be, you'd be eating, too, I guess.
Now, if they do, you know, well, what if it filters your system?
So, all right.
The health going to monitor that?
That's, like I said, that's another area of concern. I don't think the Board of Health has the level of knowledge to...
The money to sit there and send out a tester every month.
The Board of Health would rely on FDA being a consumable product, that FDA would regulate it, but FDA has different regulations, too.
Yeah, but they always send somebody a bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I think we're... So pretty much, we give you the money for the fifty-three G, and then we do the study and see where it goes from there. That's pretty much all you're asking for here?
Get you an estimate.
Well, yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Get an estimate from, I'll call, I have to call him on other, other things in the morning. I'll call him for that, too.
The hope is, this continues with every major project, that he comes to our board and, okay, you, can you guys sign off on it? Do you need any concerns?
I just didn't like...
Before you guys sign off for it, you know?
I just didn't like how they said they were going to fix up the mill, and now it's a different story.
Yep.
That's what pisses me off, Fag. Wasn't that the point of doing the marijuana in the mill? So we get our mill fixed, and now it's a different story in the end?
Okay. All right, so, uh...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Seven twenty-three.
Take minutes?
Oh, you did?
I go to town before we even commit.
So we make a motion to grant them the approval of money?
Oh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't-
How's that work?
No, the, the money's going to come from the applicant. We just, they're going to get an estimate for what, what they want for engineering and peer review. And we're going to just explain it to the applicant when they come for the public hearing that they also have to reimburse the town for that.
All right.
For that. And if they don't, or if they're not agreeable to that, then we just deny their site plan.
Yeah, all right, I get you now. I thought we were approving the money now. They get the money back.
I mean, I'm a little bit in agreement with Mr. Chenakina with the fact that they came in and sold it as they were going to fix the mill and-
Fix the mill.
And everything. And now they're gonna, now they're gonna, they tore down part of it, they're going to build a new, a new building. And they're coming in and saying it's an addendum to a site, that was a major site plan review.
It was a special permit as well.
And a special permit.
Yeah, I didn't like that at all.
I think, you know, we can't make, we can't make them start over on the site plan review?
That's what I was thinking. You're adding another building.
We approved the special permit for the marijuana use.
Yeah, but under the mill, so if they're gonna do-
So now they're modifying the site plan, so we're going to act on the site plan modification.
Right, we're not changing the special permit, I understand that, but we, but we couldn't, we couldn't tell them that they're starting over as far as the site plan review goes?
Well, we need to approve their modification, so, yeah, it's a brand new site plan.
Modification of the site plan or the special, a special permit?
Modification of the site plan.
Site plan. And how are the two, how are we connecting the special permit? Let me just, for example, Town of Dudley zoning bylaws, okay? According to this, they have to appear before, it's in the later than January thirty-first of each calendar year. And I'm going to skip a little bit of it and get to it. They are, owners of the facility and/or its owners demonstrate continued compliance with conditions of the special permit.
That was a condition, they were going to fix up the mill.
Okay, so then if they're not going to do what you suggest with the mill, was what we may have thought as part of the special permit, then I'd be interested to see what they're going to present when they come in.
I agree with you, Ms. Clark. It might be a first. No.
It seems that their business model has changed.
I think their whole plan has changed by what sounds like that.
It's become, it's a very competitive business.
Do we, do we know if this is, is, is this because the other greenhouse thing get built down off of Fish Road?
I don't know what's going on with that one, I haven't heard.
Well, Fish Road already applied for Oxford.
But it's, you know, it's a, it's a very competitive market as Richard was saying, and so there's a lot of new entrants into the field. And, you know, they're all growing or selling and so it's, it's changing all the time.
To me, it's a bad investment anyways.
I think they need to grow their own product rather than buy from others in order to, you know, be competitive, so.
Right, but they, they, you know, they're, they were originally intending on doing that inside of a building that was existing, not putting up a greenhouse and sinking a well in an aquifer, in a, in a-
I agree.
Aquifer protection zone, yeah. So there's a possibility that this may not even be possible. All right, next item on our agenda, request for continuation to January twenty-fifth for the review of a preliminary plan for a conventional residential subdivision Sawmill Road LLC, map one thirteen, lot sixty-five, thirty-five Sawmill Road. So we have a extension request here.
Grab the motion to extension request.
Tabby.
Yeah, do we need to, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
I, I think so, sure.
Want to vote on that? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we approve the request for continuation to January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three for the Sawmill Road LLC.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Guy, do you want to fill out that form that you have in front of you at the bottom of the page?
Okay.
This is your right planning board.
January eleventh.
Give it back to you. Okay, yep, it's Karen. Next item on our agenda, we got item six, review decision for Nichols College Town Home Project, possible vote to approve. Do we have?
Maybe call up the last meeting. They had not yet closed on the acquisition of Ninety-Nine Center Road. I contacted Mr. Levine this week and he informed me they still have not closed on it yet.
Okay.
So you can decide to go ahead and vote on the decision or you could wait until they close.
I'll wait till they close.
He indicated they're, you know, just working through some title issues, so I don't know if there's any, any problems with it or any difficulties that might in, in itself.
It's the pleasure of the board. I'll make a motion to, I don't know if I want a motion, but to the next meeting, till approval that deed is done.
I kind of agree. If it's not, if they don't own the property, I don't really want to approve something that they don't own.
Yeah, especially since it's going to be done by the end of the week, like two months ago.
Yeah.
A lot of these things happen as fast as people think they're going to.
Just because layers are very slow.
Should I put it on for the twenty-fifth?
You can, you can put it, yeah, I mean, if you can, if you can talk with Mr. Levine before that and before you make up the agenda or when you're making up the agenda and if he says it's done, then great, we'll put it on, we'll approve it. If it's not, then we'll, we'll just wait until, until they get it approved.
Okay.
Okay, that wraps up the new business. We're on the standard business. Number one, discussion status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets including Pear Pond Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates. Do we have anything else on that?
No.
I, I have nothing to report on.
Mr. Eddie?
Country View, no, he didn't get back to me. I've sent him numerous emails and, so, I mean, I can try calling him again, but my guess is at this stage, he's probably in Florida. But I'll try, I can try calling him again.
So, you know, we have Tom Eady coming up.
Yeah, I don't think it's-
If he doesn't act soon, we won't be able to fit it in on the one.
My guess is this is not going to happen in the spring. If we're lucky, it might happen in the fall.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I discussed this a bit with the town planner. Under our standard businesses, at some point, I think we'd want to put down the Stevens project at the Melissa. I know there was some thought that things would start happening there next month, meaning February. I did speak to a gentleman associated with Camden earlier today, and it now appears that they're targeting more of the summer months as opposed to the February date. And part of that conversation included discussion in regards to the agreement that then pending these many months where things tend to go on forever, if you will, with the owners of the Tri Valley property. And his knowledge at this point, that had not been signed.
Tri Valley hasn't signed off either?
Uh, well, it was the Mill LLC that owns the property.
So I understand they've come to agreement and-
Right.
They have a document. I just don't know whether it's been signed yet.
Right, and, and that bit of information goes back, if I will, months, you know, and so that final signature on the dotted line seems to be very elusive in this regard.
How good was that, how long was that site plan good for that we've approved for them?
Uh, I think it's three years. I'll have to check, either two or three.
Two, that does two.
That was a special permit.
Okay.
That's a good question. Is the meter is running?
Right. They, they, I mean, they've got to be close, getting close to almost a year now, I would think.
Yeah, I think it was in the spring, was it, like May?
Yeah, in the spring.
So it's been seven, seven months.
Okay, so this May come in will be another, it will be a year. And they're saying they're not even going to start until the spring, so.
Well, it's talking summer.
Summer, okay.
No hard dates on it, I'm sorry to say.
All right. Next, inspections and actions associated with site plans. Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, SCP Solar Oxford Avenue. Erosion and sediment measures, JD and D twenty-four Oxford Ave site inspection plan. I thought I saw something.
Yeah, so I sent you a new plan for the Oxford Avenue solar project.
Okay.
The site inspection reports that Graves performed indicated some significant erosion up there. So we asked them to come in with a new plan that would contain that. And they have submitted that plan and Graves has reviewed it and found it sufficient. So I think we've got that problem under control now.
Okay. And I know he went over and took a look at twenty-four Oxford Avenue for the drainage and everything.
We've got a new site inspection report for that property and Graves felt comfortable with what's going on there. They seem to do a good job containing erosion there, so.
Okay. And has he been back out to Legacy Landing at all?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, and has anything been going on at Legacy Landing?
Uh, well, National Grid had a large presence there this, this earlier today. There were three trucks. And the, I asked a question and I really got no answer. There was nobody there that I could discern that represented the builder, so I'm not too sure what National Grid was doing there at this point. As far as I know, there's no power to any of those structures at this point.
And somebody, somebody approached me last week and said that they drive by there in the morning around five AM and they have a very large smell of gas right at the driveway to that subdivision.
There have been on Airport Road a number of gas leaks over the years, usually a little further down towards the golf course. But I wouldn't suppose that it's going to stay, you know, in one location like that.
Now, you're going to contact the fire department on it.
Yeah, I haven't noticed anything myself, but I wouldn't rule it out or anything.
All right, so it's been, it's, it's been, how, how long's it been since the last time that Graves has been to that subdivision? Do we know?
Maybe in October, October, November, something like that. And they, they did find erosion issues, but it was contained on the site.
Well, I, I just drove by the other day and noticed that all the silt fences between them and the church property have fallen down. And there's sort of this-
I can have Graves go out and do another site inspection.
Okay, I think that would be something good before it gets too far out of hand.
There, you know, a lot of traffic and I would describe it as people who I think have probably either bought or are very interested in buying. Those folks have been appearing on a pretty regular basis. Usually we get a group of them, maybe two, three or four, if you will, on a weekend. And they're just trying to figure out what's happening to their money and where it's gone.
Yeah, I seen two people down there when I drove by, walking around.
There's, there's, there's nothing going on as far as any construction process or anything at this point.
All right. It brings us down to planners' plate.
Uh, two things. Richard and I are on the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. We are proposing a public forum where the whole town will be invited to talk about their issues, concerns and desires for open space and recreation. It's going to be held at the library on March twenty-third. And there'll be a brief presentation on the, on the status of the plan and then there'll be various stations, tables where people can come and, and comment on different aspects of the plan such as recreation facilities or agriculture or open space acquisition. So we're hoping to get a good turnout there to help inform the plan. We've closed the survey. We had, I think, a hundred and two responses. So CMIPC presented the results of the survey at our last meeting. We have a questionnaire that's going out to fifty or sixty town officials for their input into the plan. Various board, you know, volunteer members of different boards are getting the survey. So that's another way we're getting participation. And then the last way is this forum where people can come and we can interact with them directly on, on what they're looking for, so.
So the forum's March twenty-third. What, what time is it, do you know?
I'm not, I think it's six.
We were talking sixteen?
I think it's six o'clock.
It'll be in the Phil's room as you come to the library and meeting up to the-
So all members of this board should have gotten an email from Danny Marini from CMIPC regarding the questions.
Yeah, they're going to have to follow those out.
It's up to you, it's up to them.
It's up to me, all right.
Yeah. It went to the historical commission, the recreation commission, the selectmen, you know, you have EDC, so.
Okay.
Uh, the second issue is on the tablets. Wanted to poll you to see whether, I see none of you brought them with you tonight.
I, I actually gave mine back to two because I was not, I was not understanding how, the process of using the tablets, so.
Because the Water and Sewer Commission was wondering if we're not using them, if they could have them, so I-
They can have mine.
They can have mine.
I don't know, does everybody else have, have theirs still at home or?
No, I've handed it in, I think, I think you, you might have, do you have all of them now too?
How about you, David?
I sold mine to some kid. Now I got it, I'll bring it in.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't really use it. I use my laptop at home, so.
I mean, when you send me an email, I, I just grab my iPad and read it on that. It's, for me, it's easier.
Yeah, me too.
The point of the tablets was so you could have, have them right here at the meeting.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I don't know.
The thing's very, very slow.
Too old fashioned, I guess.
None of us ever really felt comfortable with that.
I couldn't, I couldn't get it to stay on during the meeting. I could find it at the beginning of the meeting and then halfway through it would disappear and I couldn't get it back.
So I'll, I'll let them know that, we'll return them in.
If, if they want them, I think that, you know, they can, fine with, fine with me and I think the, the rest of the board would agree.
Okay.
It'd be better if they were a little faster.
I never had one, no, I don't want one.
Yeah. Okay, was that, was that the last thing, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so comments from the planning board?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we've got a pretty good agenda coming up for Mr. Edmondson's return meeting, hopefully the fifth, twenty-fifth. We do, have we, I did make comment on the zoning bylaws in terms of the expectation that the folks from the marijuana facility would be with us on the, on or before January thirty-first. So I assume that they will be in here on the twenty-fifth. And there, this details a number of things that they're supposed to be bringing with them. I'm not too sure they necessarily are aware, since it's been some time since we spoke with them. Hopefully they'll have all of the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Okay.
And it would appear, as I said, it looks like the twenty-fifth is shaping up as a, could be a lengthy meeting.
Is that, is that the major thing on the agenda for the twenty-fifth, is this?
The other one is the review of the preliminary plan for the Sawmill Road subdivision.
Okay.
We have the Nichols townhouses as well.
Jeff Walsh's pay review letter.
That's just signing, voting, we've already voted, we just have to sign the paperwork. That should be very quick.
For what?
For Nichols, if, if they have, if they have their-
I thought that was today.
What?
Nicholas College sign off.
We just talked about it, but they don't, they don't have their, they don't, they don't, they don't own the property that they, they proposed building the detention basin on yet, so.
There were some emails going back and forth today on Graves' peer review letter, so I'll forward those to you as well for the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
For the twenty-fifth, okay. And are they bringing their own engineer for that? To describe the, the new building and how it's going to be built and all this stuff?
For?
For the, the greenhouse.
Uh, I'm assuming so. It's, it's the public hearing, so it's up to them to make a presentation on, on the whole plan.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the board?
No. The only other thing I would note at the CMRPC meeting is tomorrow evening.
Okay.
I did contact them, by the way, to use the LPA time for rent and breakfast and short-term rentals.
Okay.
I haven't heard back from them yet, but-
And they did, did they already take care of the zoning map?
I got a draft of it. I had one comment on it, which I sent back and I hadn't gotten the final version yet.
Okay, all right. Comments from the audience?
See you guys in two weeks.
And two weeks.
Move on to other business. The next meeting date, January twenty-fifth, seven PM here. Do we have any approvals or consultant vouchers, payments or bills? No, okay. Uh, other town notices, HTE approval of fall town zoning articles. Need to amend-
General approved all the articles, all the two articles that were at town meeting.
Okay, and we need to amend floodplain zoning bylaw.
So I mentioned this once before, MEMA, or FEMA, excuse me, has revised the floodplain maps for the town. And we are being required to amend the floodplain section of the zoning bylaw. And they have a model floodplain bylaw which I used to make the amendments to our existing bylaw. Sent that in, they have approved that draft which you have in your binder tonight.
Okay.
So that will be a new article for town meeting.
In the spring.
In the spring, all right.